Is that a good budget to have at there, things in that church? Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it was so.
I pledge allegiance to your right in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President, item number one.
I make a motion to approve item number one on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Arnold, sent by Christian Warren, approve item one on the agenda. Two minutes of October 11. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item two.
Make a motion to approve item number two is listed on our agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Christian Arnold, approve item two on the agenda. Prove the cash disbursements, electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item three.
Make a motion to approve item number three is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Christian Arnold, approve item three on the agenda. To ratify and prove the following requests and nor payments for training and seminars and travel. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item four.
Make a motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
I inform, I'm watching my Christian Warren, sent by Christian Arnold, to acknowledge the hiring of Angel Conley Thompson, the full-time union position, second deputy clerk of courts. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item five.
Make a motion to approve item number five is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Christian Arnold, approve item five on the agenda. Prove the payment amount fourteen seven hundred payable in quarterly installments in Northern Tier Regional Planning. Questions or comments? Yes.
That is a total amount of the, of what's going to be paid annually, not the installment payment, correct?
Correct. Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Item six.
Make a motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Christian Arnold, approve item six on the agenda. Accept by county commissioners Association of Pennsylvania Tax Pacts Bond Proposal. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item seven.
Make a motion to approve item number seven is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Christian Arnold, approve item seven on the agenda. Prove purchase of twenty seventeen utility police interceptor from New Holland Group for, paid for with LEPC hazmat funding for public safety, per the recommendation of our state. Questions or comments?
Question?
Yes.
Are we aware if that might, vehicle might be a Ford Explorer?
It definitely is a Ford Explorer. And I'm aware of the recalls.
Could you, could you let Director of Public Safety know that there's an issue with that and that?
Well, we're very aware of it. Everybody's aware of it.
Make sure nobody gets sick driving.
We're, they've got recalls, we've had them checked out, it's all taken care of.
Thank you.
Is this the second one that's been bought? I thought there was another one bought.
We bought one, I think it was a month ago.
Yeah, so this is number two.
That was for the sheriff's department.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight.
Make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Christian Arnold, approve item eight on the agenda. Prove the filing purchase service agreements between Suskind County Children Youth and Delta Village in Latropia. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item nine.
Make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Christian Arnold, approve item nine on the agenda to reappoint Chris Cadison, Rich Franks, and Nancy Early before your term on Suskind County Planning Commission beginning January first, 2018, ending December thirty first, 2021. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item ten.
Make a motion to approve item number ten is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, sent by Christian Arnold, approve item ten on the agenda. Prove the sales contract for purchase of fifteen acres of land from Cy Reilly for a price of one dollar. Fees for construction of new public safety building, coroner's office, district magistrate's office pursuant to solicitor's review approval. Questions or comments? Yes.
Counselor.
I believe that is the note for the attorney.
Do we have a proposed design? Are you working on a proposed design?
It's still being worked on.
Do we have like a consultant or an engineer?
I, EDS is the, one of the architects that's working on it. Engineer hasn't been established yet. We're working on the, just the architectural drawings. We have had the property reviewed by Hunt for sewage and for access. So we've done some preliminary work and that's all we've done so far.
How long before we get a run through?
I would say probably, if we're lucky, probably a month or two.
What's, what's the actual address? Is it on Route eleven or what is it?
No, it's over in Gibson. It's behind the State Police Bureau.
And why would somebody sell fifteen acres for a dollar? I mean, seems like that's a valuable.
It's a good cause to give back to the community and county and only charge a dollar for it.
Unusual.
There are some nice people in the world here.
Amazing, yeah. And, and what would the public safety building involve?
That'd be the ELC, nine one one, GIS, all of that.
So you're going to move whatever was here to there?
Yes.
Oh.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item eleven. Item eleven is a note. Suskind County Proposed Budget for 2018 will be available for public review effective of October twenty fifth, 2017. Closed budget will be considered for adoption at the commissioners' meeting on December thirteenth, 2017. And I know, first you're going to say how much? It's about, well, about thirty-two million, seven hundred thousand.
I'm super that double.
I don't have the exact number, but it's in that neighborhood.
And how's it compare with the, yeah?
No, there's no increases as far as tax increases being proposed or anything like that. It's a balanced budget with the revenue that we have coming in.
How does it compare with last year, the price?
It's probably within, if you look at last years and this year's, it's probably within a, probably about a half million dollars.
And then what was your check this year from Act thirteen?
It was about four point eight million.
And is that less than last year?
Yes.
Is there enough room in the budget to continue offering the millage deduction on property taxes?
We didn't offer the millage deduction last year and so it hasn't been continued.
We've got tax bills, doesn't this work?
Yeah. Yeah. Right. Well, if you take out the Act thirteen, the differences between the two. All right. That takes care of item eleven. Item twelve. Discussion on item Lyme Disease Coalition, TIC Boron Disease Task Force. We had some conversations about last meeting. Let's see if there's any other conversations that need to be done this meeting.
Can you review whatever was said last, last meeting for those of us who weren't here? Some of the key points? Can anybody do that?
No, it was in the paper and it's on our YouTube, so who's able to see?
And how is the TIC situation? Because I know where I am, I hardly saw any TICs this year, this summer, even though I hear that there's an epidemic and I'm outdoors a lot. So wondering if different areas, I guess, are more prolific than other areas.
I would say they probably are, yeah. Our state's leaning in it. So I'm surprised you didn't see any because this is one of the worst years that we've had for TICs.
I know, that's what I keep hearing and I didn't have any.
You're fortunate.
Yeah. That's Silver Lake Township, Laurel Lake.
Really?
Yeah.
Because I've heard from so many over Chillicothe area that are just voting.
Yeah, well. Well, I've been using essential oils. I don't know if that helps. Has anybody been experimenting with that?
They have.
I've been using peppermint and other essential oils around the ankles every now and then, you know, around the neck and wrists and stuff. So maybe that's doing something too.
Moving off the discussion from last meeting regarding this, is there any thought of, you know, having one focal task force coalition, you know, heading up line issues in the county?
Well, we have three groups, can I speak? We have three groups and at this point, we have the county, we have the Lyme Disease Coalition, and we have the Montrose Lyme Support Group, which was started by Colleen and Phyllis Constance. That was the first one that was about, came about. But everybody's kind of doing their own thing, I think. These gals, I believe, want to get into TIC dragging and doing more research with the TICs and education, correct?
Pardon?
And education, correct?
Actually, we're doing pretty bit. I don't know if anybody got a chance to watch or grab for down to the meeting in Harrisburg that was at, they had yesterday. They had that posted online and I didn't view it. I was looking at some other things and a lot of the things that they have brought up have been issues for years for us. It's not only education, it's prevention, it's a lot of things. So what we've done is we started doing some pilot programs with prevention. We have our next phase that we're looking to break into right now. In fact, when the meeting's over, I was going to give you all a letter for some budgetary concerns that we might have. Our, in our next phase is actually going into the schools. We have a program all set up to do that. So we're actually looking to cover a little bit of all the bases and use the other groups and organizations that decide to form to help fill some of those roles. And each one of those groups would have somewhat of a manager that would take over and do, you know, similar to like, like what the task force has been doing and doing some of those public presentations. And when they do those and they have a manager, you can come back to us and say, look, we need X amount of dollars to do this proposal that you guys put up with and we would be able to help you as far as, you know, helping with the funding and things like that. And of course, we would expect you guys to help us with the fundraising efforts and things that we do. And more or less combine our efforts and kind of bring it under one roof so that we are able to show an accountability for what we're doing, keep records of everything that's going on and be able to post it publicly in, in one general area that, you know, the public and the people that we apply to for grants and things like that would be able to go to and have that accountability to answer their questions too. I did want to make one note. On your public comment for last, it says Lyme Disease applied for five oh one C three. We actually have that knowledge and that's a big, that's a huge difference. So you can, on the IRS site, look us up and we are listed now as a recognized five oh one C three.
I wanted to ask also, what's the best way to get one of those kits? They have kits with special, you know, Lyme disease information and also the tool to get rid of the TIC and how to access that if we want more kits.
Well, what we're doing right now is we're, we're handing those out at events. So the best way actually, and that's one of our things, we need to get people to go to these events so they are learning. So that's one of those, one of the ways that you can get one of those kits. You can also get ahold of us if you can't afford to buy. We have little flyers that we have made up so people can make, actually use our reference and make their own kits up. But if you can't afford it, get ahold of us, let us know that you can't afford it and we'll find a way to help you make up the kits and.
What is your website again?
AsLymeDiseaseCoalition.org.
We also have little kits with tweezers.
With the tweezers, yeah.
And stuff. I have a bunch of those over my office if you'd like one after the meeting.
Oh, yeah. And do you have the spray also that comes with it for clothing?
No, we do not have the spray. We did not get into that because it has peritherin in it.
Right, right.
We offer the two different, too. We offer the permethrin and we also offer the cedar side, which works for both clothing and the skin.
So the cedar one doesn't have chemicals then?
The cedar will, you know, a lot of these products will say that they're natural and cedar is natural, but everything that, that goes out, you are mixing with something. So we also have a product safety sheet that goes along with that. People can look, look that up or make copies of that too if you're interested in. Eventually, we're hoping to get that posted online. That's one thing that we're looking for right now is somebody to help us keep our goals set.
Also, the state health, we have a state health nurse at this time in our county with the budget cuts and whatnot. We don't know for sure how long they'll last, but Jane Osborne is our state health nurse and she has been going into school and doing programs as well since she's been here.
That's good.
So I think there's a lot of good ideas. I think everybody's working for the same cause and that's what it's about, helping educate the people and keep people safe and healthy. There's a lot of sick people in the county. So we do need to work together. I think we should have more discussion. We don't need to take up our business meeting, I don't believe, but we should have more discussion after the meeting.
Well, my only concern too is that the last we knew, I don't think that we've seen a task force meeting in probably over a year.
There was one back in the wintertime and then I put out an email in June and most of the people on the task force work and have jobs. They're veterinarians, chiropractors, state health nurses, and they were like, we had set up in the beginning of the year what we were going to do, which was an event in the spring, which we did in March, and then an event in the fall, and then to have our informational tables throughout the summer at events like the Hartford Fair and Wolfstock. So we set up what we were going to do at that time. So most of the feedback I got from folks on the task force was like, you know, we pretty much know what we're doing unless there's something different. I don't think we need to have a meeting because everybody was so busy with their schedules for summer.
Well, it sounds to me like the answer to this right now is to try and get a meeting where all three groups can come together and, and have a meeting of everybody to find out who's doing what so there's not an overlap and, and that, you know, there may be certain groups that are, you know, experts at doing one thing other than the other. Let's see if we can't sort that out. So I think what we'll do is we'll take and try and schedule a meeting where, where all three groups can be at and we can have some discussions and see what we can do there to take and do what's best for the community. Because I think that's what everybody's interested in is trying to do what's best for the community so and for the people. So with that, we'll move on to public comment. I know you gotta raise your hand up, but go ahead.
Oh, I was going to ask too, can you give us more information about fire companies? Have, that they have access to the water containment ponds that the gas companies have? Did you get any info on that?
I did not get any info on that. I do have some people checking on that. I have talked to a few people in the gas industry that said there's no problem, so we've just got to get a mechanism in place and we're working on that now. The gas companies have offered several occasions when they have their water trucks out running if there is something that they'll divert their water trucks to help out. So, so there is some cooperation going on there.
And I wanted to just correct a little bit there. When it says water containment, they also have, are you talking about fresh water or wastewater? They have wastewater?
We're not talking wastewater, we're talking freshwater.
Oh, just freshwater? Oh, okay.
You can't use wastewater on a fire.
Okay, so that's the only thing, okay.
There are two things that I wanted to bring up today under public comment. One is the situation with our local Penn State. I don't know if anybody is aware of what's going on. If you have kids involved in the program, of course, you're involved. We, our four H educator that we had in this county, unfortunately, and we wish her all the best and happiness, she did a great job for us, but she has left the position in the county for Penn State and has gone to work for the Hartford Fair, so we congratulate her on that move. But has left a vacancy. And at the same time, the administrative person that was working in the Penn State office, she also left to go on to do other things that was, that she felt was a better opportunity for. So we have, had basically two vacancies in that office. The disheartening part of this is, is back in the end of July, Penn State was notified that these people were leaving. It took them until October fifth to get it posted on their website to fill positions and that was only one of the two positions. It was not until the fifteenth of October that they finally advertised it locally. Their time scale right now is that they hope to start interviews around the ninth of November and that they hope with any luck to have the educators' position filled out by the twenty first. As I've shared with the local administration and I've shared with the Dean Roush at the, that's head of the Penn State program, the Ag program, and shared with some of the trustees from the university, it's very disheartening and very upsetting that Suskind County again is getting, how I feel, taken advantage of by this organization. They were notified thirty first of July and it shouldn't take you all those months to take and fill a position. Now, of course, their excuse is that they've got some different things going on with their HR department, got consolidated and that was the black hole and things didn't get done. Incompetence is incompetence no matter how you look at it. So unfortunately, we have four hundred and eighty kids in our county that are in these programs, that rely on these programs to, to give them the extracurricular activities they need, keep them off the street corners and keep them away from other people they shouldn't be around. They have committed to us as commissioners, they met with the three commissioners yesterday and committed to us that they will do everything in their power to make sure nothing falls through the crack by bringing people in from other counties to work here. Of course, our concern was if the person that was working full-time here was struggling doing it seven days a week, how can you make, say you're going to maintain everything by coming, bringing people in two or three days a week? So they understand our, our concerns, they understand that we're not pleased with them, but again, I can't blame all of this on Penn State. Most of the people I've talked to up through the ranks have only been on the job for less than a year at Penn State. And the reason for this goes back to our lovely legislators in Harrisburg that are incompetent and can't do their jobs. We sit here again, going into the end of October with no state budget again. So what happens is organizations like Penn State that do a great job for us, do a great job for the kids and we love them, the people that work there see the uncertainty with the state without passing a budget. Are their jobs getting cut? Are their jobs going to stay? What's going to happen? So they move on. So we lose a lot of good people from Penn State because the legislators in Harrisburg and the governor can't get over themselves and get a budget passed. So it's time the public knew the facts. It's not all Penn State's fault. Yes, they did drop the ball back in July, but it's not all their fault. There's a lot of new people, a lot of uncertainty, and that's caused because of no state budget. The people in Harrisburg again are getting paid a salary. They should not be getting paid. They should not gotten paid after July first. They should all be on a pay freeze, no money whatsoever until they do their jobs. It's the only profession I know that you cannot do your job and still get paid and still keep on serving. I, all of you work in the real world and I call it the real world because most politicians and most people in Harrisburg and Washington don't live in the real world. They live in their world, which is about how am I getting elected at the next term so I can stay in office and keep my cushy job where I don't have to do much. The real world, you know that if you don't do your job and perform, your boss is going to come walking into your office or in your area and say, guess what? You've got a new career, it's not here. You're gone. And I think there was just an article that was brought up yesterday in the, I think it was one of the Lackawanna County Representatives.
Yeah.
Has missed, what was it, like two hundred votes so far this year?
I wanted to be found.
I mean, you've got to be kidding me. I mean, this is, and, and we haven't talked about the financial impact. You know, last year, it cost you as taxpayers millions and millions and millions of dollars because of their nonsense in Harrisburg. Because when they don't send the money out, the school districts have to borrow money. Then they have to pay back the interest. The townships have to borrow money. The communities have to borrow money. All the agencies have to borrow money. All that interest gets paid back. Well, the state doesn't give you the money for the interest when they finally make you whole, the taxpayers end up paying that. And you're either going to pay it in a tax bill or you're going to pay it in services, you're going to pay it someplace. So again, we're now looking at another year where we're heading in in November with no budget passed. People in Harrisburg are totally incompetent, can't do their jobs. We need to clean that place out down there. I don't know, maybe we go to the Arkansas or the New Hampshire where we get rid of Malpan fifteen or eighteen thousand dollars a year instead of the hundred and some thousand they're getting paid. And then maybe we'll get people that'll go circling because they care about their communities instead of caring about their pocketbooks. Now, believe me, I'm not one not to hold back and I probably said some things that I'll get some phone calls later from some people in Harrisburg that they're not going to like it and I don't really care. Do your job, that's all we ask for. And we ask to hold, as you ask us to hold people accountable and responsible, we ask that those people are held accountable and responsible. If you can't get it done, then get out. Simple as that. Get people in there that can. So that's my spiel about Penn State. So I want you to know that the commissioners here, we are committed to this program here. And believe me, if we could pull the plug and say we'll do Penn State, the Ag program ourselves, we'd do that. But we have to have Penn State. We can't just do a local program. It has to be statewide, this, this program that exists. So we can't do it just ourselves. If we did, we'd already have done it, we would have booted everybody out. But we can't do it, we have to have Penn State to run this program because there are connections with all the other organizations across the state. So, but we will continue, the commissioners are committed to these programs and we are committed to make sure these kids get the best quality they can. We will continue to fight and, and raise heck with these people to try and get this done. The other thing I wanted to bring up today is Forest City Library. How many people have ever been to Forest City Library? All right. Forest City Library is celebrating this year their fiftieth year, which is a milestone for them. So you haven't seen much hype in the paper about it, you know, we did put some information in the paper a while ago, but I would invite everybody, it's fifty years that library has been serving the public in Forest City. I invite everybody to go down and see Diana Junior and her staff. They do an excellent job down there, they service the community, they do a lot of good for the community. It's unfortunate, the library board and, and the main library has not recognized them. They've been too busy with their hoo-blow with their new building that they've kind of forgotten about the fifty years with the Forest City Library.
And one day would that, when would they be celebrating that?
It's been, they celebrated it like a month ago. They had a function at the Stone, Stonebridge. Yes, thank you. They had a little function there. So if you get a chance, please stop in and thank them for being a part of the community and thank them for the job that they do to, to help everybody. Now I'll get off my soapbox and, well, and I, and I think that's important too, that you understand too, is that the county commissioners from past to present, the library gets over, over, we provide more than half the funding, we provide more funding than the state does. So it's the taxpayers now. You know, when people get confused, they say, well, you know, the commissioners, they got money, let's get the commissioners money. The commissioners don't have anything. Believe me, my pockets are empty from being here. We have your money. You are the taxpayers. We are the stewards of your money. The commissioners have no money. So the taxpayers are the ones that fund a good portion of these libraries in this county. You as taxpayers. And we appreciate that and they appreciate that. But we ask that, you know, again, in this situation, if you get a chance to stop in and see people in Forest City, you know, they'd like to at least know that they matter too. So, okay, now I'll open up to anybody else. Yes, sir.
Well, I'm glad you brought up the state budget and everything too, because that led to some of the questions I had. Have you or either of you had any conversations with our local representatives about where we're, you know, where we're at with this stalemate?
Absolutely. And I understand perfectly for me what I think in the same conversation I had today, that they need to get off their butts, they need to get this done, they need to rally other troops down there, they need to be, if, they need to be talking to their fellow Republicans, that seemed to be the problem. Because now the problem in Harrisburg is you've got a Republican-controlled House, Republican-controlled Senate, and my understanding from everybody down there is they're fighting amongst themselves so bad, they can't get nothing done. Now, it's, there's nothing wrong with people not agreeing, there's nothing wrong with board of directors not getting along, there's nothing wrong with township supervisors or commissioners or anybody not getting along, as long as the work's getting done.
Right.
And in most cases, you want them not to get along because when you get nine people on a board that all say yes all the time, then you need to start worrying about what's then you need to start worrying about what's really going on. Because then something's going on probably that shouldn't be going on. So, you know, the object is, is when people don't agree, it kind of keeps everything in check and balance. And I ain't done it right now. I am not going to do anything that's out of the ordinary or wrong because I know my two colleagues are going to hold me to task. Just like if one of them do something wrong, I'm going to hold them to task.
So it's, so it is just a, it's a matter of in-house fighting more so than just...
It's a matter of in-house fighting and getting together and saying, okay, here's a good budget. Get it back to the governor's desk. Let's all of us get together and get this thing done. But it's, they're fighting over all the nonsense. And the problem you run into is when you've got two hundred people in the House plus goodbye, yes, we are. We're in pretty good shape. We don't really, we don't have a problem. I mean, we're losing that revenue. And we lose the interest off that revenue because we take that revenue and put it in interest-bearing accounts to get us more revenue. So we do lose money in the process. But we're not in a position where we're going to have a problem with services or anything that the commissioners have. You know, other agencies outside of us, you know, like Area Agency on Aging, that's not a county agency. They're their own agency. You know, they could be running into issues. But the other thing that you have to understand, part of this, this derailed train that you have is there are no grants being done. There are no funding streams coming out of Harrisburg. All the grants that got written are sitting there. Nobody's funding anything. Nothing's getting through. Nothing's getting approved until a budget gets done. So all the projects people applied for in communities and things like that for whatever programs, all that sits until these people can finally get off themselves and make a decision. Now, the problem with that, again, when you talk to the economics. If we had a budget in July first, people that had projects could have had them done this year. Well, we don't know what the cost of oil is going to be next year. If you're doing blacktop work or anything else, next year, that price of blacktop could double. So now it may cost you twice as much. If you could have done it this year, you would have saved a ton of money. You know, future costs of dollars is huge. So, but locally, and thanks for bringing that up locally. Listen, I will tell you right now that this county is probably one of the best counties in the state financially run. And because of the commissioners that are here and the things that we're doing and making sure that things get done. Our pension fund is one of the best in the states now. You won't find one probably better than ours. We have no short-term debt, no long-term debt. Everything is paid for. So, and we have, and we have the assets in the bank, liquid and invested, to keep the county going and doing what we need to do. Yes?
Do you guys go down to Harrisburg and speak on the county's behalf on some of these issues?
I have, I have been there. I was there last year several times. I've been on the phone to several people this year. I will probably make another trip depending on what happens in November. I will make another trip in November at some point to go down again.
That's what I was wondering when they have hearings such as like what they did yesterday. You know, do the commissioners go down there and speak on our behalf? Because I guess that's, that's my take on how this all works. You know, we've got our township leaders, then we've got our commissioners, and then we've got, you know, state. And it seems to me like that it should all funnel through all these people together. And they should be speaking for our residents.
In a perfect world, that is great. But that is kind of like the Mary Poppins world. It does not work that way. I can tell you that the legislators really don't care what we think as well as they don't care what the township supervisors think. They care what you think, the public. And then when we say to them, this is what the public wants, they just let it go. If they hear from you as, as public, then they pay attention.
But if we have you to go down there and speak for us and we show up with you, then they know that we mean business.
Well, you would need to take, and what we need is we need the forty-four thousand people in Susiana County. We need those people to send emails and make telephone calls. And you will get more attention that way than sending a busload of people to Harrisburg. Because a busload of people, we did that how many times with the Minimum Royalties Bill? We've done it how many times with the TIC thing? And the legislation doesn't change. The rules don't change. Everything just keeps getting kicked down the road. The can gets kicked down the road. When they think...
With a lot of the letters that we did with the, with the TIC stuff, you know, I've just noticed in the last few years, why us showing up down there and having somebody that is in a major office speaking for us with us there to back up some of those and speaking along with them, that's what's really gotten their attention.
No, what's gotten their attention is all the emails they've gotten from other people about the TIC program. I'm telling you, listen, I have been dealing with these people for twenty-five years in Harrisburg. They do not care what I think or what any of the one of these commissioners think or the township supervisors. What they care about is what you think. And if I go down there and say, well, the public said this, they don't care. When they hear, because what they say is, well, when we hear from the public, then we'll take notice of it. The attention getter to them in Harrisburg is the emails and phone calls from the taxpayers saying, I'm tired of paying my taxes and not getting the services out of Harrisburg or Washington that we should be getting. I mean, we've gotten to the point in this country that we accept incompetency in our leadership all the time. When was the last time our federal government had a budget? Does anybody even remember? I can't remember. We've done continuing resolutions for so long, I can't even remember when they've done a budget. And they go and they do their things. And the only time they care, how many representatives? Now, there's a couple that show up here. But, you know, there are representatives that never come around until it's election time. And then we're lucky if they show up then.
Well, here's what I don't understand. If they don't pass these budgets, I don't understand how they're even getting themselves paid.
Because they have classified themselves as essential employees of the state, so they get paid regardless.
How do we get them declassified?
They have to pass the law that says they're not essential employees.
Right. So we need to get it out of voting so that we can vote for them not to be classified.
Well, we can't. They have to. That is done legislation in Harrisburg. So, any other questions? Billy?
Just wanted to mention, I talked to Team Pickett and Jonathan Fritz's office last week about the budget. And Jonathan called me back yesterday. Unfortunately, I wasn't home, so I plan on getting back to him. But specifically, I was talking about agricultural relations, relation...
No, and I will tell you, Bill, on that note that you bring up, I will tell you. Team Pickett, Lisa Baker, Gene Yaw, John Fritz have been all receptive. I call them, they talk to me, they work on it, they try to get it done. Again, it's, it's kind of like Penn State problem. That's the end of the dog. That's four people out of like three hundred people in Harrisburg. That's the end of the dog. Now, their job has to be trying to get other people down there convinced these are the things we need to do. And they're all rural counties. So they're outnumbered by the numbers in Philadelphia, Harrisburg, and Pittsburgh. So when I say, you know, people are incompetent in Harrisburg, I'm talking about the system. I'm talking about the whole system down there is incompetent, the way it works. Yep? But, you know, here's the thing. You know, Lisa Baker tried the one bill saying if we don't pass the budget on time, we have like a continuing resolution that you get funded what you got last year and it keeps going till we do a new budget. Once you cross that threshold, then you end up like the federal government that never does a budget anymore. We just keep doing continuing resolutions. So they've got to do a budget. They've got to be responsible to do it. And it's not all, but it's like this guy from Lackawanna County that's missed two hundred votes. How could you ever put a guy like that in office that doesn't even go to Harrisburg and vote on this stuff? And then he sits there and draws his eighty or a hundred thousand dollars a year from you and, and his benefit package. I mean, to me, that is criminal. So, but yes, Billy, they are very receptive. And, and I will tell you, and, and those four legislators have gone to bat for us. They did the letter force on the grant application for the emergency services, nine-one-one center, public safety. They've been very receptive and working real hard. So, you know, it's the rest of the bozos down there that just...
Yeah. I've dealt with it for years, so I know where you're coming from.
Ask township supervisor, you know, so...
I've got to tell a story that I don't think Sandy will mind. Probably twenty, twenty-five years ago, election night, Sandy Major and I are out in the hall out here. And the results are coming in. She told me about some friends of hers down in Springville. She had stopped to visit. And she said, these are people I'm sure who voted for me regularly. And they told me I was doing a good job for them in Washington.
Aww.
That's how ignorant so much of the electorate is. They, they don't have any idea what's going on.
Well, I don't know if I would call them ignorant. I might be disconnected. I'll be a little bit more politically correct than you are.
I'm not running for anything.
Which is hard to... The electorate is very disengaged.
Yeah.
Because people are fed up. You know, they walk down the street and talk to me. People are fed up. Listen, I'm tired of paying taxes. I'm tired of my school taxes going up every year. Every time I turn around, my tax bill goes up. I'm, I'm sick of that. I'm tired of no jobs. I'm tired that my kids got to leave the area. I'm tired that I can't get the services I, I need. You know, everybody's just fed up. All the promises that were made, you know, we had people go to Washington, they promised this. None of that stuff's getting done. When nothing gets accomplished in those, in those two arenas, in Washington and Harrisburg, you know, people look at that as, as just, you know, listen, it's just more of the same. Why, why do I keep fighting to try and do something better or get something when every time we turn around, we can't get anything done in Harrisburg or Washington? You know, and the perfect gauge to me is the spending. When, when you see, you know, I will tell you right now, our economy would be a lot better if both federal government had some things accomplished and, and had some things taken care of and our state had a budget. Because the consumers don't have any confidence right now. Would you go out and invest a hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars in a project when you don't know what's going on in the state or the federal government? No. You hold back and you say, you know, I got to wait and see what's going to happen. You know, I'm surprised at this point that, you know, the investments have been as good as they have been. Because at some point, the confidence level's got to be, listen, we have no confidence in, in our governing bodies at the state or at the federal government because they can't accomplish anything.
Many years ago, before these gentlemen were township supervisors, Liquid Fuels money...
They're not that young, Bill.
They haven't been on quite as long as I was. But anyhow, the state was late with Liquid Fuels money.
Yeah.
Well, the people, the township don't say, well, you don't have to maintain our roads until you get your money.
Right.
You know, so we had to go out and borrow money. And that costs money. What can they say? The interest rates are high, then...
We had the same problem last year, Bill. And I don't know if you remember, last year, we ran into the problem where AAA, Area Agency on Aging, came over and said, listen, we can't provide any more meals to the homebound people, you know, because the state's not sending the money. Well, what do we do? Now, it's a county. We could sit here and say, you know what? Not our problem. That's a state problem. You know, do what you got to do. But we didn't do that. We stepped up as, as county commissioners and said, listen, we can't afford to have the, the, the people that are homebound that depend on not only somebody getting a meal, but somebody coming into their house and checking on them and giving them a little conversation. We can't take and throw that away and say, sorry, you can't have that. Or the person that's getting the, the aid at the home because, you know, they just came home from the hospital and they need somebody there to take care of them. You know, we can't say, you know, gee, you know, that's not our problem. That's an outside agency in the state. That's their problem. You know, there's still people in our community. We've got to step up and do what we have to do. So, yeah, I get it. Anything else? Yes?
The jobs that are open at the Penn State office, you said there are two of them. Where are those posted because...
They're on, they're on Penn State's website. That's where you have to go. There's only one posted. I'm trying to find out what's going on with the administrative one. They haven't posted that one. Penn State has a hiring freeze. That's the other issue right now.
Do you know what the requirements are of those two positions?
I, I don't, but I'm sure if you go online, it'll list the requirements online for it. And if you stop down to Penn State office, you know, Jason's usually down there or Jeanette may be there. You could talk to them too. And they could give you some information on that. You had no...
Yeah. Just back to item number five, the money that was given to the Northern Tier Regional Planning and Development. Is there any connection there or cooperation between them and last month's or last meetings? Will we...
Privacy, sorry.
Yeah, the CBPA?
Yeah, they're kind of, they don't work competitively with each other, but they both work together. They both have some different programs, but they both have revolving loan funds. So both organizations are a plus because they do pump a lot of revenue into the businesses in this area as far as trying to help businesses get up, businesses expand, things like that. So they don't, they're not in competition basically with each other. They have different programs. Like Northern Tier also handles our, our TIP program, which is our transportation improvement program, if you want to call that. We have that in this county. But they handle all of that with PennDOT. So all that, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes documentation and paperwork and, you know, it's a, it's a government program. So when you do things, you got to have a mountain and a half of paperwork to get a paperclip. And so they do all that work for us so we don't have to have an army of people here to take and do those programs. And how it becomes justified, Northern Tier represents several counties in the Northern Tier. So by doing it for all the counties, they got one person doing it for five counties instead of five counties having one person needs to do it. So it becomes a, you know, a thing of economics. It's better for the, for the counties to be able to do it this way.
Is there any type of like yearly report that comes out that where we see...
Yeah, they have yearly reports that they put out. And we can try and get you some of the last ones that just come out.
Okay, is, is it possible that they're accessible like in each county's website or like that?
I think, yeah, they're online. Yeah, you can go to Northern Tier or Progress and try and get a book like that.
And they hold an annual meeting.
And they hold annual meetings and stuff too.
Okay.
So, Sarah?
Do you, do you know what the issues are that are holding up the budget? What are the main issues they can't agree on? Is it one of them the severance tax on the gas industry that's holding it up?
Well, I do know that out of the House, they did pass, pass something that had the severance tax on it to go back into the budget. They agreed on something. But it's, you know, you name it, it, it's everything. Doesn't matter what it is. The issue is not so much spending the money. The issue is where are you going to get the revenue from? You know, that's the problem. They all know that, okay, it's great to pass this budget. And we can pass a budget, say we're going to spill, spend fifty million, fifty billion dollars. But where are you going to get the revenue side to take care of it? And that's the big issue is how are you going to fund the budget? And that's the problem, the hurdle they have. Do you raise taxes? Do you cut programs? What do you do? You know, a month ago, they were going to rob all the, all the funds that had money left over. And then realized that, oh, that's not the smartest thing to do because most of that money is already encumbered and it would hurt all the programs that they were supposed to go to. So now they've, they've gone from being able to steal two billion dollars to, okay, we might be able to find sixty million laying around. So finding the way to fund it is the biggest problem they have. It's like the, the item that's on the agenda right now for, that you're going to vote on in November, right? Yeah. And it has to deal with property taxes and relief and all of that. And you need to really, and it's a very complicated issue. And I invite everybody to go online, research it, and figure out what's going on. Basically, it gives, puts the mechanism in place to eliminate or reduce property taxes. The only issue with that is there's no mechanism in place to make up the revenue. So it's great to do away with it, but then who's going to pay for it? And the response I got was, well, we'll figure that out later.
Well, that's why the governor wants the severance tax, I would think, to pay for these programs and to pay for the difference in the lack of monies.
Well, I will tell you, the last bill that I saw that come out of the House on the severance tax was not a bad bill. And the one that, one of the ones that Gene Yaw had was not bad. Basically, what it did was it grandfathered our Act thirteen money. So whatever we were getting in Act thirteen, we continued to get.
Okay.
Forever. Forever. Well, that's a lot better than, I'm hoping it's the same this year, and we get them for next year, and it keeps going down. So if we get grandfathered, it's a good deal. The severance tax would be in place, and then the, the operator would be able to reduce their severance tax by what they paid in the Act 13 fees. So if they, say they had a bill of, their severance tax was 100 billion dollars, and they paid out 50 billion in the Act 13, then their severance tax bill would only be 50 billion. So they would be able to deduct that. But it would keep that Act 13 money intact for the communities that are having the impacts and, and getting that money out into it. Now, surprisingly, that moved, because the big players like Philadelphia, Lebanon County, and all those other counties, they have no gas drilling, you know, they get a little bit of gas money now, and it's like, here, let us wet your whistle. And now that they've got that taste of that money coming, now they want more and more and more and more. So that's why they were on, on the big severance tax kick. We want just the severance tax, do away with the Act 13, send all the money to Harrisburg. Because how money gets fed out of Harrisburg usually on programs like roads and bridges and things like that, it's based on population. So wherever the populace is, they get the most funding. So of course you know where those places are. So, you know, that, and that means that us people above interstate 80, you know, we get to see nothing as usual. So, so there are some things that work out, but the biggest fallback they have right now, the biggest heartache they have, is the revenue side of the budget. How, how are you going to pay for the budget? They don't know. And they can't, and that's what they can't agree on. Some say raise taxes, some say raise the income tax, some say, oh, we'll just borrow some money. Well, if you borrow money to balance your budget, then you got to pay that back someplace. You know, at some time, you know. Others, you know, it's been a push to sell off the liquor stores and generate revenue that way to, to do something. They've had, they've said they wanted to expand and raise the sales tax to pay for stuff. So, so they've got all these ideas, but nobody can come together to, to balance it out. Yes, sir?
What was the, the number, you said, the Penn State and 4H programs, how many Susco Hanan County youth are affected by that budget?
I know, at one time it was 486, and that was like a year or two ago. I'm not sure of the exact number now, but it's well in 450 or above. Anything else?
Is that water line connected yet in South Montrose to the jail?
Yes, it's connected to the jail. We are running on, thank goodness, we are running on public water at the jail now. So now we don't have to have our water tested every month and deal with all that stuff.
And it's also recycling center?
And the recycling center.
And also...
And those businesses are on that.
The businesses...
Anything that's from the jail back to Montrose has the capability of hooking up.
And have any homes connected to it? Because also, it's passing some private homes.
It's passing some private homes. I don't know if they have yet or not. No, I don't know. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Can I just make a comment about the Forest City Library again?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that the success of the 50 years of the Forest City Library is from the Lions Club in Forest City, Forest City Borough, and NEP Telephone. They pay no rent there. The Lions Club funds a lot of things for the library, and NEP Telephone gives them, you know, free internet and telephone, things like that. So, so that's where the success comes from, along with Diana and her staff, is community working together.
And that's the same with the other two branches that the library has. I mean, I don't know if they, I don't think they get anything for the main library or for this library over here, but like for Halsted, the building is owned by the Borough, they give it to them rent-free, the heat's taken care of by the, by the Borough, and all the repairs basically by the Borough. So they have a good working relationship to Borough. You know, and then this is a testament again to the towns and municipalities that want these programs in their areas, and they're willing to, you know, make their sacrifices and, and lose revenue to try and, and keep those programs running in their areas. So that's important.
Now, if you say they're 50 years old, how old is Montrose Borough Library?
That I couldn't tell you, I'd have to research that and find out. That's been here a lot longer.
I would think it's longer, right?
Yeah, I'm...
I think we're already at this point, I'm going to say, because I remember when they did their 100.
Yeah.
So kind of in 10, 15, 16.
I was going to say, probably around 115, 120.
That was at least a decade ago, so...
Yeah, yeah.
So Montrose is the oldest one, it sounds like.
Right, right. All right, did I get a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn, please? Second.
Motion and a second, all favor?
All right.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. I'll try to get on my soapbox. Not really.
We knew you liked the talk.
I know, you looked like you were enjoying it.